Go for it.
Yes, sir, it's ready live. I'm recording.
All right, after item seven, executive session, returning back from executive session at eight oh five P M. Where no, uh, no action was taken. Uh, item one, discussion, consideration and action with regards to deliberations involving the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a city officer employee or to hear complaints or charges against such officer employee unless such officer employee request, uh, request a public hearing. Um, no action was taken on this item. Is that sufficient, Henry? Okay.
There you go. Yes, sir, sorry. I was being fast enough with my.
No problem. Moving on, uh, back to item eleven on the regular agenda. Uh, discussion, consideration and action on updating annual leave and sick leave of Anthony, Texas Employee Handbook to Paid Time Off. As you know, ladies and gentlemen, um, what I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to open up the floor to Mr. Guzman, who's from the local union, uh, representing the, uh, Public Works Department. Um, and I'll give him his two minutes to speak and then I'm going to give, uh, some opportunity, uh, for other councilmen to, to speak. I think, uh, we've had enough opportunity to discuss this item and answer any questions that have been left. But, um, at the end of it, I'm going to go ahead and present to you guys my proposal, uh, for updating the annual sick leave to, uh, paid time off. So Ms. Norma Gonzalez, do you have Mr. Guzman on the line?
Sir, I've been trying to contact Mr. Guzman and he is not answering. Um, and he had the invite sent out to him since Friday, but he hasn't joined the meeting.
What I would do just out of professional courtesy, Norma, is I would try and continue to reach him. Um, I'll still give him his two minutes, uh, but what we'll go ahead and do is move forward as counsel to discuss this item. And if he pops up at any time during the, uh, live stream or anything, just let us know. And I'll go ahead and give him the two minutes on the floor, okay?
Yes, sir, I'll try.
Is all counsel okay with that? I guess so. Um, as you know, ladies and gentlemen, we, we had a pretty heated discussion last time. Um, one of the things moving forward, you know, that I will comment to say, uh, depending on how this thing goes, is I want to make a couple of statements. For one, um, usually at times when we're discussing these serious items, you know, we don't get hopeful support. We get enough support to get it passed, but some of those decisions that we have moved forward on in the past that have been beneficial for the town of Anthony as a whole was when we cut the hundred and fifty thousand from the police department that barely squeaked by as controversial as it was. But in doing so, when we look at the future of the town, I want everybody to know how it paved that way. We've been able to maintain a consistent, uh, amount of, of members to the P D. We've been able to maintain and manage the raises and the benefits. And sometimes when we're looking at things moving forward, we address a problem that was brought up to us even when I first started in this administration. And unfortunately, the discussions have always been made to, to rectify and establish the policies and protocols as they should be in a timely manner. And we've been doing that little by little over the years. We've been chipping away at some of those things and making it better for, for the overall staff and the community. And that's where we look at making our decisions from. And when I say some of these decisions are the tough ones that not everybody wants to make, but are necessarily ideally the, the ethically and morally correct ones to make for the overall prosperity of the community as a whole. Now, moving forward, I just want to state, at times, we had our public works guys that came to work and no matter how hard they worked or those that didn't work, they could potentially barely scrape by with only a three percent increase annually if it was afforded or allowable financially. At this point in time with some of the decisions and things that we've made moving forward, we have made it possible to give our employees not only in the public work aspect, but also with the administrative staff here with the courts and the clerks at town hall. We've been able to make way to give anywhere from a three to a six percent increase in raise annually by merit. If earned, if worked for, that's something that was never possible. Not only with that, we've been able to add and extend the additional paid holidays that we provide our staff. We've added Good Friday and if I go through all the holidays that we give them off, if you add that in total to what we give an employee here at the town of Anthony after one year of employment with the town, which is twelve days, including all the holidays, we're almost giving them three to four, three to three and a half weeks of paid time off. One of the things that we were looking at in trying to address was the time and effort in policing that we have to do in making sure that the sick leave as it was utilized for was being used properly. In one year, we went from paying out and expending over twenty thousand dollars, getting stricter on it to fifteen, down to ten, and at the start of this year, policing it and requiring a doctor's note on the first day, wanting to utilizing it up to two thousand dollars right now. Though it may be a positive aspect that we are no longer allowing the sick leave to be, in essence, utilized without proper documentation to justify a sick day. It takes a lot of work, takes a lot of effort and it pulls a lot of stuff, uh, time away from our administrat- our, our administrative staff in policing it. By me presenting this proposal, I'm moving forward with trying to minimize the time and effort that it takes to police that and try and focus our staff and efforts that they make and take on other productive aspects here in the town. We can focus on economic growth and development. We can continue to look at establishing and fixing our ordinances, muni code, streamlining policies and procedures here in town. And what I've moved forward with and what we've looked at crunching the numbers, keeping in mind, this is not for financial savings. This is just for administrative workload. Um, I wanted to point out to you guys. As of right now, Mr. Weeks asked, how much do we have or how much would we pay out in sick leave if everybody were to get sick today? With everything happening with COVID nineteen, who knows? That is the potential. Um, but as of now, we still have eighty-five thousand dollars that could be on the hold and paid out in sick leave if we got everybody sick. That's over five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five hours, Norma, if I'm correct. That is over a hundred and fifty-six weeks, uh, uh, worth of work that gets paid out in sick leave for essentially people to do nothing. What I'm presenting here for the town is not us taking away the sick leave from the employees, but changing the verbiage in when and how it is utilized. Mr. Garcia had made a comment at the last council meeting about what if they get sick? What if they get in an injury, a car accident or something? As you all know, please do not forget that workman's comp and all the state statutes and policies that apply to workers getting injured at the, at the job still apply. They still get paid. We still budget for that. That is not going away. That is not going to change. This is just the extra time that the town is budgeting as a benefit to the employee. Now, what we're on, what I'm proposing is that we change the description of sick leave to catastrophic. That way it is only utilized when necessary in a serious type of need, um, like cancer illness. Um, something that is a little bit more serious where an employee would truly be out of work for a significant period of time. Of course, exhausting their P T O or vacation time first. When we looked at the overall hours what an employee can earn or accrue in a year would be up to a hundred and twenty hours. And that is what I'm proposing to council, that we leave it at a hundred and twenty hours per year. We no longer accrue. It is just given to them on anniversary date automatically and can only be utilized under that strict and stringent cut criteria. In regards to vacation, I'm looking to change it to paid time off. But in doing so, not only are we making sure that the benefits for the sick leave are used as necessary, but we're also improving the benefits by adding an additional vacation date from the twelve days they get in the first year to making it thirteen and two days after they've completed their fifth year of employment here with the town of Anthony. So those individuals that have worked here for more than five years get an additional two days of paid time off added to their already, uh, uh, plan that we have based on tenure here to the town. Now, with us doing so, I've had some questions raised this. What if an employee, you know, has a doctor's appointment and he wants to come back to work? As long as his doctor allows him to come back to work, that is fine. He can come back to work and he can work, but get paid only for the time that is worked. The way we utilize the vacation days is going to be the way we change them now in eight day, in eight hour or, or full day increments in order to minimize confusion and also minimize administrative work in maintaining and documenting time off. Um, so that's basically in a nutshell, what I'm proposing here to the town council. And I would ask that you support this measure and move forward with supporting, um, my proposal, uh, for the town of Anthony. Uh, basically, I'm going to open it up for discussion or any questions or clarification um, for this, for, for council, uh, that I may address or that Cindy may address. Um, but it, it's pretty much in a nutshell there. It's just to increase productivity, minimize administrative workload and policing and keeping the documentation and also improving employee benefits by giving additional vacation days and classifying, uh, vacation as just paid time off. Questions? I'll open up the floor to Mr. Weeks.
Well, I, 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 I want to wait and talk at the end after I think some more, but I did have two things. One clarification, you said that at the end of a year, uh, people get a hundred and twenty hours now of sick. No, they, they get ninety-six. They get eight hours basically a month. I think they end up with ninety-six. Uh, but can you go back and show what they're currently getting uh, as far as vacation and sick as, and then tell us what your proposal are for, for, for year one to year five, the year whatever?
So in, in regards to the, the catastrophic sick leave, that is going to be all the way across the board to all our staff, uh, department heads, um, in administrative, administration that is under it. Um, just a flat hundred and twenty hours. It is equal and fair all the way across the board and it will be deemed and labeled as catastrophic. In regards to the, what we would consider, since we're no longer using vacation days, what would be considered paid time off? Cindy, if you have that graph or Norma, if you have that, if you can put that on the board, I'm going to currently try and find that from, uh, Ms. Ramirez right now.
Let me send, mayor, I'm sorry, I mean to interrupt. I have it on my PowerPoint here, but if you want, let me send it over to Norma so she can share it from her. I don't think that I have sharing privileges, um, but I'll send over that scale here and just give me a couple of seconds.
Yes, Norma, will you be able to pull that up?
Go for it.
Okay, so let's give an opportunity for Norma to pull that up. Um, that way you guys can see what we're talking about. And in fact, Mr. Weeks said that, uh, an employee can improve to ninety-six hours in, 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 in sick leave in a year. Well, I mean, like I said, this is an added benefit because we're giving them and we're proposing a hundred and twenty flat each year by anniversary date. There you go. So if you guys look at the number of continuous, uh, service, full-time employees, annual leave, one to five years is thirteen days. So we're going to increase that to fourteen. So for sick, or in fact, Cindy, is this the corrected one?
Yes, sir. I was just trying to tell you that this is a proposed one.
Okay, this is the corrected one. So if you look at one to five years, it's thirteen days. Six to fourteen years is sixteen days. Fifteen to twenty-four is twenty-one and twenty-five years and up is twenty-five days. Now Cindy, if you correct me, the six to fourteen years, is that the one or the two?
I think so. Let, what I can do, mayor, let me pull up the original one. That might be a little easier because I'm not sure that this one reflects your new change of the two days after five years. So let me pull up the original and just give me a sec.
Now, one of the things while she's pulling that up that I wanted to touch on, that was a comment that many of you read the, uh, the letter from the local union. Um, you know, it, it seemed like they were saying as, 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 why are we? In a sense, they said in their words punishing the rest of the staff for a few that are doing, you know, or miss or abusing the sick leave. Um, I want to clarify something for the record. Nobody's punishing or anything. Uh, what we're doing and what I'm doing administratively is I am addressing a flaw and loophole that we have in our policy for the sick leave. And even though, even they openly admitted that there are individuals that abuse that, I and us as staff cannot pass policies that are going to address and, and target those individuals. We're not looking at targeting or doing anything to anybody. What I'm proposing is that we amend the policy and fix it so that there is no potential for abuse to happen. That way we trust everybody all the way across the board to manage their time off. But also in that added benefit that we provide, make sure that we do our due diligence, that it is not taken advantage of. And by doing so, without having to spend all the unnecessary time policing it, I am only clarifying the description and the, the, the classification of what it is called and how it is to be utilized. We need to focus on putting the responsibility on managing the employee's time back on the employee. And we need to make sure that we increase our productivity and make sure that we have the necessary staff available to do the job. Time and time again, we have been without members in the work crew for extended periods of time, you know, in the past, without doctor's notice. Um, and that leaves our crew short, potential for injury goes up. Um, overall, uh, stress and exhaustion is increased because they're the ones always having to carry the additional slack and weight, um, of any of the said individuals that may be abusing that. So overall and all, this is a ideal solution that has been something that was even pushed forward from, from, uh, Mr. Tommy Gonzalez at one point from H R, uh, gone to H R when we first talked about it, but at the time, we weren't in a place financially where we could do it and we didn't want to just drop everything from the employees all at once. And I think in what I'm proposing is a way to address that issue without taking anything away, but also increasing the benefits by making sure, uh, we establish accountability.
So mayor, just really quickly, the, I hope everyone can see the shared screen. This is the annual current plan in place in the employee handbook. So anybody employed and completing their first year of service through the completion of five years gets twelve. So with the new proposed, it would be bumped up to thirteen. Anyone after that would obviously get two additional days on what is already currently reflected on this particular slide, which six to fourteen would be seventeen, uh, fifteen to twenty-four, twenty-two, and then twenty-five or more would be twenty-six.
And if you look at this, ladies and gentlemen, with a hundred and twenty hours and moving it up to the thirteen days, of course, in the policy, they would have to, uh, exhaust the P T O before they utilize the, uh, catastrophic sick leave if, uh, it is deemed, uh, necessary at that point and it falls under the criteria. That's almost over a month off, guys, paid. So from some of the comments and the last stuff in the meetings, um, I want to open the floor up to you guys, but I do not want to hear any more excuses, uh, for trying to pay employees not to work. Um, we need to be mindful of what we can afford and what we need to do overall for the town of Anthony, uh, as a community, as a whole, employees, staff, residents. And remember, some might think of it as not our money, but we are entrusted to spend and utilize the taxpayers' money efficiently. Um, and I think by my proposal, uh, we are doing just that. I open the floor, ladies and gentlemen.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Louis.
I was wondering, a hundred and twenty hours, uh, are they going to be accumulating every year? Is that, uh, like the following year is not used, it go away or do they start accumulating again?
So the way we do it, Mr. Alfaro, that is a great question. We are no longer accruing it. It's just like we did with the vacation days because it's just too much to try and factor in on the, uh, stuff with A D P, on the classifications, that we would just rather do it simply and their anniversary date, they automatically get it. It's given to them, just like the vacation days. So if they've exhausted or utilized sixty hours and they have sixty hours left, doesn't matter. They, it, it, it's there as a safety net, uh, as a potential blanket to help support if they need. Um, but every year it's available to them. It won't carry over. It won't accrue. Uh, it's just automatically given every year at their anniversary date. They get a hundred and twenty hours.
Right, right. Yeah, I was kind of wondering because I know that sometimes they accrue a lot of time and it's never used, you know?
And for us to look at covering that, you are correct, could be substantial and that's why I stated, as of right now, with whatever's been approved and utilized, if we were to get everybody sick, we have eighty-five thousand dollars on the hook for sick leave.
Hello?
Yes, sir, Mr. Alfaro, go ahead.
The other thing is that it's for me, it's kind of just, uh, thinking about the timing that with this COVID nineteen and everything going on that, uh, that I think might be an issue, at least the way I, I, I'm seeing it right now, that maybe we should wait till this pandemic is over with and then probably make changes. That, that's my thing, that my take on this, but I'm still thinking about it. So just.
I do want to mention something really quickly. Um, and I don't know that you all are aware of it, but, um, when this whole COVID situation ensued and, um, the Department of Labor you did issue an act, which is the first family's, um, coronavirus response act. Okay, and that particular act provides employees that have been employed thirty days minimum at least with eighty hours of paid sick leave that, um, they will be provided if they meet the prongs to cover them through COVID nineteen, whether it's they're waiting for a diagnoses, whether they do test positive, whether there's a local, national or, or federal type of closure or quarantine issued by a county. Um, you know, things of that nature, if it's COVID related, that is, you know, that's a caveat to that. It has, it has to be completely a hundred percent COVID related. Um, then they are entitled to eighty hours of a one time, right? Because employees tend to abuse this and they want to take advantage of the situation without realizing that if they were to utilize those eighty hours and exhaust them today or next week, you know, and should they get sick further down the line, that, that would no longer be applicable to them, right? It's a one time. So there is coverage for employees for that amount of time.
Well, that's very important because that's one of the things that I wanted to make sure that people understood about that particular program because, you know, we're like you said, we're not trying to do any major damage here in case you get sick in COVID nineteen, but there is help available and that was the main concern. So that's why.
Mr. Alfaro, and, and that is good that Cindy touched on that. And also, one thing, uh, I'll give it forward to Cindy in just a second is, yes, go for it.
No, I just want to make sure that I don't want to forget to say this just because chief is, you know, law enforcement, healthcare providers, there's a certain group that the D O L has made exempt just because I know there's people listening and I don't want, you know, stuff later on to trickle in and say, well, that's not what they said. So just, just, I need to put that out there.
And then also on that too is, um, just like you guys noticed and know that, you know, Texas unemployment paid out over thirty-six million. Um, and we have individuals, I see it, I hear from it from some of the local restaurants and stuff, um, because they're paying that additional six hundred. They're able to work and, uh, if we wouldn't have had the high numbers right now, we have a lot of people choosing not to return to work because they're getting those extra six hundred dollars. So I think when there's opportunity for something like that, you know, not saying everybody takes advantage of it, but if the policy and paper is there, those that want to take advantage of it are going to take advantage of it. And I think by us moving forward with this now, by giving the additional, changing it to P T O, by giving the automatic one day, the two days based on, uh, tenure and all that, it's going to take care of it. It, it's going to balance out. There's not going to be any issues. Um, and that's why I kind of want to do it and not kind of, that's why I want to move forward with adopting this, uh, policy and protocol now. That way we minimize any potential for any advantage to be taken. We make sure we maintain the productivity and the level of staff and support that is necessary and that we need to continue moving forward as a municipal entity. Um, and of course, make sure that if in fact anything like that happens, they are covered and protected. And I think Mr. Chavez had raised his hand. I saw that on the screen. Uh, Ms. Norma or Mr. Chavez, you have the floor? Mr. Chavez?
Yeah.
Well, I thought you were clear.
Yeah, I can move forward. Okay, uh, touching on that right there, Ben. Um, I'm not sure if you guys were aware, but my son got, one of my sons got the virus, okay? So we, we, when he got tested, we were not aware if he had gotten that, that he had gotten the virus until he actually got hospitalized, okay? So that's where my problem lies. If one of the other employees comes out and their family member there at their house gets it, okay? And they exhaust those eighty hours because my son lasted in the hospital for, for a while. He got it really bad. We, we thank God that he can't, he, he was able to get through it, okay? He's not completely cured, but he's there. Not everybody's that lucky, okay? We got tested, we got, we were, uh, negative and not everybody's going to be that lucky. But I think by getting rid of this, the, the sick leave right now, I'm like Louis, maybe in a few months we can do it. But as of right now, I don't think we should be able to do this. I don't think it's the right, uh, I don't think it's the right time for it, should I say. I'm not saying that's not the right thing to do, but I am saying that I don't think it's the right time to do it.
If, just for clarification purposes, Councilman Chavez, um, you, sick leave, if the employee themselves isn't sick, sick leave can't be utilized either way. Um, so let's say, for example, if my son is ill um, and I want to be at his bedside and I work for the town of Anthony, I can't access that sick leave anyway because I myself am not sick. So I don't know if I understood that correctly, but, um, in, in.
I understand that part, but see the thing is that when, when my son got hospitalized, we got called and they told us that we need to self-quarantine until we get our results back. That's what doubts from the doctors that he, from the hospital, okay? So if, if, for instance, where I work at, there's two people that already tested positive. We thank God that they weren't in the office, they were already, uh, uh, working part-time and, and at home at their second jobs. That's where they cut it at, not in my office. But if they were, if they were to came into my office and we would have gotten sick, my, the, the hospital will call us or my family and tell them, you need to self-quarantine. That's where I'm getting at.
Give me one second, Mr. Chavez. Uh, Mr. Chief Alika, you, you raised your hand. Go ahead.
Right, so touching base on that, Eddie, we had the similar issue, uh, we had a similar issue going on. So by the orders of the Health Department, we're asked to look at our symptoms so people can, can evaluate themselves, right? And they, there's multiple tools and what I told my staff is that you need to evaluate yourself to understand if you, you're having those.
And what I've told my staff is that you need to evaluate yourself to understand if you, you're having those symptoms. Now, if you feel that you're having those symptoms, it's your own responsibility, like you guys did, go and get tested for whatever it is. So at that point in time, while you're in that waiting period to under, to know if you're coming out positive or not. You have a self-responsibility to say, am I feeling sick? Do I need to stay home? And then so at that point, that's where you can utilize, right now, there's, there's sort of, there's a sick leave that, that's on there or the PTO that's on there. And then I tell my staff, this, that's what you, you guys have to utilize. Um, until the point comes, if you do test positive, then that's a different story and that's where, where HR is touching base on. That's where that act provides, provides them. Now, the, all the other staff is privy to it except the police department because we're not privy to that, we're, we're exempt from that act. So that's, I think that, that's where, where it's coming from, we have to make sure that us as individuals. We're making sure that we're, we're looking at our symptoms. And if we are, then it's our choice to stay home, et cetera, whatever it is, but again, we have to make sure that, that we do the symptoms, right Cindy?
Believe me, I'm sorry Cindy, but believe me, you need to, you need to check your symptoms because if you don't. And you, and I mean, it's bad, it's bad, you need to check your symptoms all the time.
So, so I guess to kind of just piggyback a little bit on what chief is saying, um. There are certain CDC guidelines that we in HR, so there's a process, right? We're not just running wild and, you know, doing crazy things without seeking guidance, okay? Um, if, there's certain processes that the mayor and ourselves, department heads have put together that will ensure that. People who are caught in that particular position can be given the appropriate processes to follow to ensure that. If they need those eighty hours, they can have them, if they need the time, they can have them, but at the end of the day. It becomes a, a, a decision as a professional, as an adult. Um, going back to the monitoring your si- your symptoms, right? You have two ways of looking at it. You have one way of saying, this is my free vacation time, I've got eighty hours and I'm gonna use it all up because I need a break. Or I'm gonna wait a couple of days for my results to come in because the CDC says to monitor your, your, your symptoms for the first seventy-two hours. If you're not exhibiting anything, you're awaiting results, you can wait another couple of days and if you have no fever, you have no cough. You know, yes, there's a possibility that you can be asymptomatic, um, but even then, um, your results for the most part, their results come back negative, right? Now, this is very case by case, okay? But you also need to understand that the CDC has been very specific on how they define exposure. Okay, exposure is being exposed to someone who tested positive, you did not respect the social distancing, it was less than six feet. The amount of time you spent with them was in, in an enclosed space for more than fifteen minutes at one time. It's not if I cross by you in the street and all because they're two offices down, that doesn't automatically make you infected or make you positive for COVID nineteen, okay? So there's a lot of education pieces that need to take place, um, for everyone, right? And we're learning as we go and things are changing on a daily basis, you know, but we do need to understand that from definition of exposure. It's less than six feet in an enclosed space where there's no good ventilation and it's exceeding fifteen minutes at one time. So again, if, if, we do recommend obviously, you know, if it's someone in your household that you are with living under the same roof. Obviously that changes things, but if it's someone who doesn't live with you and you haven't seen them and it's been eight days since the last time you saw them. And you haven't exhibited any symptoms and it's very likely that you haven't contracted the virus. So those are things that HR needs to come in and analyze and, and walk through, okay? Because, you know, with Ms. Norma's favorite term, it's not cookie cutter, okay?
And you know what, for to, to, just to finally close on this, because it's starting to turn into a COVID thing. Um, I hear this again and again and I hear it every time. We're always looking for particulars when we can do that when we're establishing policies, guys, this is just generalized. The reason why I say to do it now is because I heard two, two comments about we can't do this maybe later. Well, why later? Because right now the state has the statutes, the state has it, all the policies and everything that we have to follow. What is this gonna affect the sick leave? It's not, it's not gonna do a single thing. And we do and take every precaution here at town, take temperatures, do symptomatics, uh, uh, you know, sign in sheets and stuff like that, that. We're putting the accountability and the responsibility on the employee, guys. Right now, the way things are set up is just an à la carte kind of free for all and it needs to be fixed. And considering the COVID and everything moving forward, even with the state statutes and all that. Easily people can come in and take advantage of this, okay? And I'll tell you, and I don't want to go into it or anything because that's more of a, of an HR matter and stuff, but I'll tell you, it is be taken advantage of. Um, so moving forward, you know, we can't always predict and look at all those things and what ifs, that's always what we get. But what we're looking at is establishing a solid policy that establishes accountability. Minimizes all the administrative policing that we have to do and lets us focus on our time on what we need to do. Economic growth and development, policies, immunity code, everything else in the book that we spend too much time trying to police with this sick stuff. So, um, I don't know how else to say it, guys, but we can't continue to just, you know, beat around the bush. I think we've put a, a, I'll even be surprised with myself, I'll pat myself in the back. We put together a pretty solid, uh, presentation and I pretty much put it straightforward. Um, I'm still looking to see anything that would change any other or my decision otherwise. But I haven't heard anything that was substantial because even from HR, from our chief, we have everything that's looking out and, and policies that are put in place. That protect for those kind of instances, so, I mean, eh, can we move forward? Um, I'll give the floor, uh, Mr. Alfaro, Mr. Weeks, uh, Mr. Garcia, I'm waiting to hear from you.
And the only thing I have is, is, uh, every year on, on anniversary, uh, a new balance of a hundred and twenty. Twenty hours is gonna be given to the employee. If the employee decides to separate himself from the town of Anthony and has another employment, the balance of that PTO, will he be paid?
The, the, the paid time off, Joe, right, miss, miss, uh, 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 is, or is that only with the police department? If they leave on good terms?
Okay.
If you, if you clarify that, but sick leave as of now, whether it's catastrophic or not, that doesn't get paid out.
I wasn't talking about that, just that PTO time that, uh, and, and your leave. Okay, but you answered, Cindy answered and she was moving her head back and forth.
I'm not head banging, Joe, I promise, I'm just trying to say yes or no.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Weeks.
The other thing, guys, the other thing we have to address is to have to make sure that we. Is that not everybody, uh, does abuse the system, there are a lot of people in town of Anthony, do work hard, they do follow the rules. And they, they do, they do do what it's supposed to do, so that also has to be taken into consideration that it's going to, uh. You know, help that too, I think, in this, in this regard, you know?
Yes, you, you are right, Mr. Alfaro, and on top of that, that's why we looked at it, by changing this policy. You know, we'll do all across the board, the, the additional vacation and sick and the, and the, the vacation or PTO days, the additional days. But this is, like I said, thi- this is not a punishment, this is not to anybody because there are individuals that use it correctly. What we're trying to do is fix a flaw in the policy so that no potential, uh, 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 abuse can happen. Miss, Miss Ramirez?
I was just gonna say that this isn't a punitive measure, this is more of, uh, you know, trying to streamline things, um, facilitate. And of course naturally, um, you know, ensure that we minimize the amount of risk if, you know, people are not at work. That, you know, that things are, are getting done appropriately and properly. It's, it's not a punitive measure, it's just a, a matter of, of growing with the town and trying to, um, streamline. A more efficient way of ensuring that people still can, uh, benefit from these perks in the right way.
Correct, and one of the things too, ladies and gentlemen, you know, i- i- in looking at all this, I said, you know what? In the future, what can we do? You know, we've done merit-based increases, maybe something that we can bring up to the table in time, okay? Is potentially looking at the, at the fact of maybe setting up a long-term disability plan with the employee. Just like we do with the insurance, where the town pays a certain percentage and the employee covers the, the, the other, the, the rest. For something long-term, right? More than maybe the hundred and twenty hours. Uh, but those are things that we can discuss at a later time. I think right now, where we're at budget-wise with the water, we're seeing the next seven percent increase, it's gonna take, take effect next year. Um, with the low revenue that we've been seeing with the COVID right now, um. I don't want to stretch that budget any thinner than it really is. And by having eighty-five K on the line that could potentially go out in something like this. Um, it's not something that I'm gonna want to set the town up for failure, I don't want to be or set up anybody for disappointment. And also the town for, uh, another significant loss, so we're taking it day by day. But everything and everything that I've put forward, like, you know, Cindy said, it's not punitive, it's not retaliatory, it's nothing. It's taking into accountability the finances, where we're at with the administration, policy, the time and work and effort that it's taking. To manage and maintain this, we can do it other ways and be more productive and focusing on bringing in revenue to the town. That could potentially help us and be more beneficial in the long term. Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Uh, okay, so Cindy, what was the answer to the question on the PTO? Do the employees get paid for it or they don't get paid for it?
If they terminate, if they separate, it's unpaid.
Okay, okay, um, so, okay.
With the exception of the police department, Councilman Weeks, because they're under a collective bargaining.
Okay, so, yeah, because this is something that when we next collectively bargain, we're gonna have to work on with them too. Is, because let, let's look at this, guys, let, Ben, throughout the five thousand five hundred and sixty-five hours. So that breaks down, a, a full-time employee gets two thousand and eighty hours in a year. So that's two full-time employees plus a, 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 another half a year of another employee, plus another nine weeks. So that, what that really means is, we are paying people. Uh, if they, if they used all their, the way it's set up now, if they used all their PTO and they're sick and so all the hours that they have. We would, and, and this doesn't include the police. So we have forty-some employees, fifteen or so chief writer or, or police, so we have like thirty employees, is that about right? On, on, uh, or no, we have about twenty-five employees on, on, that this is gonna affect. So we're gonna, so we have a benefit system that makes it so ten percent of those employees, uh, uh, that's not very productive. That we're, we, we have this thing where five thousand five hundred and sixty-five hours could be added up. Um, if somebody, let's say, so, so Louis and Eddie brought up, and, and, and I know we're all thinking about COVID right now. Um, I'm gonna go just the total opposite way. My mom gets cancer six months, uh, six months after a well check, she has stage four cancer, spreads throughout her body, she lives for a year and a half and she died. Uh, whether she had twenty, whether she had a hundred twenty hours or a hundred and sixty hours, if she doesn't have some long-term disability. She doesn't have life insurance or she doesn't have another plan or savings, she hasn't benefited or helped her, her family. And, and, uh, and she's not gonna end well in her life. And luckily she had life insurance and she had disability and she had these things set up. So if somebody gets COVID, whether they're an employee, whether they're me, and I get sick and I die, it doesn't matter what the hours are. I- if you, if you don't have a, a, a plan, if you haven't planned ahead for yourself, it, it, it doesn't matter. Um, going back, the way this would be set up is if we switched it right now and you've been here, uh. Five, one to five years, you'd have thirteen days of PTO, that's two weeks and three days. You have eighty hours that the government would give you, right, for this new COVID plan, and you'd have a hundred and twenty hours that we'd be giving you. Right? So you have two hundred plus whatever the other thirteen, I mean, you got. But is that five, five months? Of, of to, you know, forty, twenty, yeah, you got, you got five months, you know? So to say if somebody gets, gets, gets sick, goes to the intensive care or whatever. They are covered under our plan for five, for what, five months? Between the eighty, the one-twenty and, and, and the whatnot, i- is that right Cindy?
Um, well, the eighty is two weeks and then you have the hundred and twenty, which is another three weeks.
That's not right.
Saying months, you're scaring me. Yes.
That's how many weeks?
I was scared for a second.
It's eighty hours, so it would be two weeks, you know, forty, two work weeks, two standard forty hour.
Almost six, so it's almost six weeks.
Give or take.
So it's almost six weeks, um, right now, our two forty is how many weeks? It's six weeks, right?
For those that.
If they, if they, if, if they have, so if they don't have it, if they haven't accrued it. Then they don't have it, plus they'd have the eighty that, that we'll give, um. Okay, so I did, I wanted to point that out, it's not like they just have one-twenty, I mean, they get the eighty. So that's two weeks, they get the one-twenty, that's three weeks, they have their PTO also that they can utilize, um. So then my question comes, we talked about this four years ago and everyone was on council at that time except for Eddie and Louis, I think. And then, uh, Joe and I were on council and we, we didn't go this route, uh, because the timing wasn't right. And then in the last three years, we, we passed the, the handbook in February twenty seventeen. And so in the last three years and four months, the timing hasn't been right. And now because of COVID, the timing just isn't right, but it would be right in a couple of months, why wasn't it right six months ago? Before COVID.
Or a year.
You know, um, we have to look at the numbers, what, what COVID has really done is made us understand that. If something happens, we have such a rich policy and I hate it, I, I, I understand that employees don't like to hear that. But if you go work for somebody else, you don't get twelve vacation days, you don't get two weeks and two days after your first year. I've never worked a job in my life where I got two, two weeks and two days of paid vacation after working one year. I think isn't the standard one week, I think that's what Van Horn told us. And then you get two, two, you build up and got another two weeks and two days of sick, after one year, you have twenty-four days. So what we have done and Ben brought up with the police department. And, and, and that was, if you guys remember, that was such a, a crucial thing to get our budget back on, on, on kind of a balance. Is we've started out where we, we had this great benefits package and we had sixty, seventy percent of our money is going to employees. And benefits and insurances and whatnot, and the standard's usually thirty to forty percent. And we've always been working backwards to get to where we need to be. And like I said in our last meeting, if we started over, we wouldn't offer what we're offering now. But what I like is, is that it wasn't just a knee-jerk reaction. It's been in the pro, this has been in the process for three to four months of working and thinking and talking to Cindy. And coming up with ideas, when we talked a couple of weeks ago, we weren't saying that the one-twenty was going to. Reappear every year, you know, so what they did is they said, okay, let's listen to what people are saying. What if somebody really gets sick? What if somebody does get cancer, okay, and you only have so much? But you can accumulate, but, but say you beat that, say, say you have a car accident, you break your back and you're out for six weeks. And, but then, or you have cancer and you have to do some big treatments and you, and you're out for a while and these are cata, these fall under catastrophic. Then say three years, two years later, something bad happens to that same person, well, under our current plan, they wouldn't have built up any hours. They wouldn't have, they would have built up some hours, but if they were sick with the flu a couple of times or whatever, they're only getting ninety-six a year. Unless if they don't take any sick at all, here we, we, we evolved and we said, okay. What, you know, let's do this every year, but it has to be a major illness, you know, it can't just be the sniffles. And it also takes away this, this thing where people thought, well, because, uh, my kids are sick. Or somebody in my family's sick, I can take sick to take off to take care of them, now this, this straightens all that out too. So I like the fact that it's evolved, I like the fact that it's changed, and, and then my question to everyone is. There's never a perfect time to do this, so if, if we're not doing this now, the truth is we're never gonna do it. Because we've had three years to do it. Our department heads, we're not supposed to name names, but they, they need our support too. And they need our help and. If, if, if people were against this, they would let us know. So that's, that's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks, and I mean, he's, he said it, I mean, what better time than now, what better place than here, you know? Um, I took a lot of time and we put this together and I think it's the perfect time to do it.
Well, I'm gonna, Ben, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Um, the reason this is being brought up now and the reason this. The reason this is being brought up now, and the reason this wasn't brought up three years ago, is cuz our administration, I'm just gonna be blunt, our administration up until a couple of years ago, didn't have the guts and the backbone to to take something like this on. They know that this is uh, this could be political suicide. Yeah, I'm not a politician, and I know that this is gonna ruffle the feathers of people that control votes. But is it the right thing to do? That's what you have to ask yourself. You know, um. We we didn't touch these topics un- until the last year or so. These things we knew about didn't get brought back onto the table, and 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 past mayors wouldn't do it, wouldn't wouldn't do it. So. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks, and in closing, guys, before I ask for a vote, that is exactly, you know, like Sean said, it may be political suicide, but I'm not here to play politics, I'm not here to cater special interest groups to look to buy votes and this and that. I'm just here trying to get the job done that I felt when I first ran for office wasn't getting done. And over the years, and no matter the relationships I've built, uh the 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 trust that I've gained, I will no longer, I will never betray the fact that we have, that I have a loyalty to the community as a whole. Employees, constituents, everything, and everything that I'm moving forward with is to address infrastructure issues, to address the vent, the the budget, so we can move forward and become prosperous as a whole. Not just a group of individuals in particular or only one thing. So, you know, I wanna thank you guys for the time taking, letting me speak, I'm glad that this not, this did not turn into a shouty match. Unlike the workshop, but hey, you know, all discussions, you know, work out for the best, I hope. Um, but I'm gonna leave it up to the floor now, and I'm gonna ask for a motion on this page. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve the changing of the vacation and sick to uh PTO with one to five years being thirteen days, six to fourteen being seventeen days, fifteen to twenty-four years being twenty-two days, and twenty-five plus years being twenty-six days.
No, make it, remember Sean, it's the two, it's the one on the first year and two for after five or six.
That's what it was, yeah, before it was twelve, yeah, that's what I did. And then with with a yearly catastrophic uh uh sick, catastrophic sick of a hundred and twenty hours, I uh that that doesn't roll over, but uh it doesn't accumulate, but it's every year.
Anniversary. Do I have a second?
Do you have a second?
I have a second made by Councilman Alfaro, uh motion made by Mr. Weeks, seconded by Councilman Alfaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me, no.
I got two opposing, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Chavez. So, the official tiebreaker will fall on myself. Um, and in closing, these are those tough decisions that we have to make, gentlemen. Um, I will not bow, I will not put my tongue between my legs, uh and not make those calls, everything that we have done this year or in past. It'll be surprising if you look through the videos, they've always been denied by the same people, but it's the individuals that are chastised, so they're the ones moving this town forward. So, I say yay uh to approve uh changing the PTO. Um, from PTO, given the additional days as stated, and also uh changing the sick leave policies to catastrophic. Motion passes. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, moving on to departmental reports. Uh Streets. Uh Everett and I, we met, we looked at uh some of the uh instances with the additional sidewalk. Everything's gonna get done and move forward, we have the individuals that were encroaching on the properties uh to move back onto their designated property lines so we can install the sidewalk. Um, everything is moving forward with FM nineteen oh five. With the guys being busy in the stuff, we do need to look forward and get some street, uh some street sweeping probably done. And also, uh, right now, we're addressing some of the lighting with uh EP Electric. I I did speak with one of the directors, and I'm wondering if the rep that was uh designated to our area, I don't know if he's out or what, but I've sent a few emails uh addressing the burnt-out streetlights and stuff around town, and I still haven't got a a response, so um we're working on the lights, ladies and gentlemen, just please bear with us. And then uh basically, um, what's it called, uh? Everett and these guys will give you during the uh water and sewer, uh some of the updates in regards to when we're gonna be looking at shutting the water off, cuz they are pretty much done with installing the new section of uh main water line on Popular, and he'll give you some more information on that. Go ahead, and that's all I have for uh Streets.
Ben, I have a question for you and Everett, have have, and this might just be administrative too, but have the uh staff, especially that ones that work outside, shifted their hours now with all the heat?
Well, that's something that'll be on Everett's, that's one of the things that I told him to look at probably doing for the ones that are outside. Um, but you know, we'll see what, you know, uh a- a- any long-term stuff that Cindy might say. Uh, but like some of the stuff that's involving like the work on the sewer, and where they're gonna end up switching the lines out, we're gonna try and do it at night. Um, but I know it has been getting possible, we've been telling them to make sure that they're hydrating, um wearing proper PP equipment and sunscreen.
And um, Mr. Weeks?
Yeah.
We have been, especially when we read meters, since it's, you know, we tried to keep coming out one hour earlier, sir, you know, cuz of the heat. And especially like uh when we have like projects like this, we tend to come in early, cuz the heat's just very hard right now, and it's.
Right.
And just from a nature standpoint, that is completely discretionary on the department head, um so long as, you know, we follow the DOL laws and stuff. You know, after overtime and all that stuff, forty hours, things of that nature, but that's completely Mr. Hockes' role.
The only thing is, I mean, I gotta leave uh someone available, cuz it, since the office closes different hours, and we, I gotta have somebody available as well.
Right.
For for work orders and stuff like that, sir.
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, moving on to Parks and Recreation, uh Mr. Hockes?
Uh, on the parks, sir, uh, we got with Hector on the uh AB Electric, so we can continue on the project on the lights. Uh, he was giving the drawings today, so he can give us a quote on it, and uh also, those uh pet uh stations are here, we, they arrived today, so just let you know, we got them in. Uh, we're gonna be setting up some of the Triangle Park, no, I'm sorry, not a Triangle Park, the Royal Park, which is a dog park. And also, we're gonna be setting some in Wildcat, okay?
For right now, uh wait, I'll probably meet with you guys on Friday, so we can set up the areas to set them up at. Right now, I'm gonna hold off on the Royal Park, um with the increased numbers in COVID cases, we may have to end up shutting down that.
I do agree.
That's being anticipated. Uh, as you guys know, Parks and Rec, uh with the increased number of COVID cases, we did open up the Royal Park, you know, at least for the individuals going out with the dogs. Uh, but we have been seeing individuals kinda congregate there, um more than the allowable groups. So, you know, we may be looking at shutting it down again, uh to just minimize any potential risk of group gatherings like that, at least on on our properties and stuff like that, uh for now, but um I'll keep you guys posted, we will be putting those little uh bags and receptacles all along Wildcat. Cuz even with the COVID and the numbers and stuff, uh they're still allowing individuals to utilize the walking trails. So, since that'll be frequently used, we'll make sure we cover that area for sure. Anything else, Mr. Hockes?
That's about it, the park, sir.
All right, moving on to Police and Fire Chief.
On July fourth, we had several calls for service on July fourth, uh for fireworks. Uh, the majority of the calls were up in the Heights area and some of the lower parts of Anthony. Um, no major incidents reported, however, the officers did um respond to all the calls for service. The majority of the incidences were occurring in people's backyards. Uh, of course, officers try to make contact, but if people don't answer the door, we can't go in there by force or anything. Um, so, once they knew we were there, they pretty much stopped. I know that we had a lot of irate people, because people were still popping fireworks, and a lot of them were actually coming from the New Mexico side, and it sounded like it was coming from the Texas side. But for the most part, everybody that we know of complied as far as the the two vendors that we had in the area of, they stopped selling fireworks at noon on July third. And other than that, uh tomorrow, we have a grant management uh training with the TDM, Texas Department of Emergency Management. We have it scheduled at nine AM, and they sent me the email, since I oversee the project, we're gonna meet with uh the main representative from Austin, myself, Norma, and uh and David. So, we'll see, as you know, we are getting reimbursed seventy-five percent of everything that we we spent having to do with COVID-related expenses. And that's pretty much it.
Under Police and Fire, guys, I guess I'll talk about it too for administration, or or I'll skip it in administration. One of the things, uh, as you guys know, Governor Abbott is talking about the potential closing down Texas again, if the numbers do getting, uh do increase. One of the things that we, I talked to Chief about, because I was already starting to see this uh in Costco, they know it's coming, they're prepping for toilet paper, for wipeys and everything. Um, we're already seeing people starting to load up on that stuff, we're gonna be sending a letter out to all our businesses, since we still are under, if I'm correct, Henry, under technically the disaster declaration, um we're gonna send notice to the businesses here in town um to make sure that they start rationing out those items before it becomes an issue. That way, we don't see that type of uh mob mentality and uh hoarding that we did when this thing first kicked off, cuz there's not a shortage of anything, especially now, since they kicked up production to keep up with uh the the uh need for it, so there's no reason why people are gonna need to go and hoard stuff and start going all crazy and and you know, for all this. So, we're gonna try and get ahead of that before it becomes a problem. Moving on to uh water.
I just had a question for the chief, uh chief, did uh, did you guys end up getting the uh hazard pay?
Uh, we are still waiting, we're still waiting for a response back from the governor's office to see if we got the grant awarded.
Okay. Hey, send them an email, tell them we need it.
Right.
And then one of the things, guys, on the Police and Fire, everybody's talking about like that CARES Act fund that we got, you know? Thirty-six thousand, it is a lot, but it's not really a lot when you're looking at, you know, administrative stuff. So, you know, we had some residents that were a little bit of uproar of what it's used for, we posted a link on what it can legally be used for. Um, but we see El Paso doing some stuff uh with it, so in my honest recommendation, once we look at it, we're gonna try and get it clarified. But i- if that money comes back to us, what I'll probably do and look to recommend the council for doing is that we just apply that thirty-six thousand dollars to everybody's water bills all the way across the board, and evenly, everybody's got a water connection here in Anthony, that way they get a credit for whatever amount it is, cuz uh when we factored it in, that thirty-six thousand dollars would only be twenty-nine dollars per household for business, for whatever, but that way, nobody says anything, we're applying it fairly and evenly across the board. And if that's something they allow us to do, I'll move forward with it, you know, and we'll we'll put it on to you guys for discussion, but other than that, uh, anything else, Chief?
Can you get back in off of that, Mayor, I think it's very important for for the residents to understand that the reason we got thirty-six thousand and pretty much the county, when they're applied for grants and they apply for all the municipalities, is they go based off on population, and people right now aren't really paying, are paying more attention to COVID rather than the census numbers. So, it's important that people do do the census, because as our numbers increase in population, so does our funding. So, this is a perfect example of how if we have an accurate number of population, and we, if our population has already increased, the funding that goes to the community increases, so that's like a perfect example. If we would have had, let's say, for example, everybody report on their census that we have, um, let's just, I'm gonna throw a number, let's say ten thousand residents, right? Then our funding capability would have been ten times higher, so for example, um, the city of Socorro has over thirty thousand people population. So, their portion under the the CARES Act or any other grant that that the county is distributing is about two hundred and eighty thousand. Compared to our population is only thirty thousand, so it's important for people to understand that they still have a duty, and if they care about their community, just um fill out the census numbers.
Sounds good, thank you very much, Chief, and everybody does still have an opportunity to fill out the census, right? Or did that close?
I believe they still have the the uh the opportunity to still fill out your census forms.
Fill it out, ladies and gentlemen, it's important. Um, that'll wrap it up uh for Police and Fire, moving on with uh item D, Water and Sewer, Mr. Hockes?
Uh, yes, sir, just to uh let you know, and uh, we're ready to, actually, the line was tested today, and it, it passed, it got flushed. So, we're getting ready to actually put it back in, put it in service, and you want a line on Popular? I got with a contractor, uh, we're gonna shut down the the water, hopefully on Thursday at ten uh PM. So, you're gonna notify the public, and uh make sure, you know, it's gonna affect from Eduardo all the way to uh Main Street. And anybody that lives uh pretty much uh west from Eduardo, it's gonna be affected with this water churnout on Thursday night. We can, you know, it's probably gonna be up, we're gonna work for the, you know, pretty much all night, we just, we can do those connections. Unfortunately, our system is so old, the valves don't check, and we're gonna just replace the whole, whole line, including new valves, new isolation valves, and new connections.
Also, one of the things to touch base on, and I'm sure you got the email, Everett.
Yes, I sure did.
Was uh, we do wanna let you guys know, which is actually, uh, I mean, I know a lot of us are 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 pretty excited mainly because.
I'm excited.
You know, i- i- it's due, but we did get um the well update and stuff, and they're saying the new uh well that they dug is gonna be a very good well, I think they were doing what, sixteen hundred gallons per minute? Um, and it was uh, it was, once they would pull it down, the, it would refill immediately. So, right now, what they're doing is they're sending off the samples to test, hopefully, we don't get any arsenic or anything in that. And if it, uh, if everything's solid, man, that's gonna be a high-producing well for us, guys.
Uh, as a matter of fact, I was gonna, just before that, they, to produce a well, they run it for uh six hundred gallons per minute for four hours, and then eight hundred. And once you shut it out to see what's on recovery, I mean, that, that well recovered less than a minute to back to the static level, so it was pretty much incredible. Uh, they uh, they crank it up all the way, almost to close to two thousand gallons per minute, that was amazing to see, you know, that well actually hold that. I mean, then we have a high-producing well, that's actually what a town needs, so, pretty excited about it, so we can put it in service. And uh, another thing on 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 the, I don't know, about the violation that we had for the arsenic, we have no violations, the only thing was, I was able to clear it up, I emailed before to, and I was talking to a representative from TCQ, and we got those violations.
Yeah, and in regards to those violations, ladies and gentlemen, it's not necessarily the arsenic, it's just the requirements of having to submit and send the letters out. We were in full compliance with what the mandatory notices and stuff were, so they they tried to issue a violation to us, but once we showed them the documentation and paperwork, they pulled that out real quick, because we we've been following all the, all the necessary notices and everything that's that's set forth by uh TCQ. All right, that's it for Water Sewer, Everett?
Yes, sir, that's about it.
Moving on to Courts, Mr. Palomares.
Mayor, Council, um, on Courts, we're still doing the audio and and telephone, the uh video conferencing and the telephone conferencing for the hearings. Um, everything's going smoothly, of course, we got a few technical difficulties like we do here uh in our meetings here, uh here and there that pop up, but other than that, things are going smoothly. Uh, for June, we got a report from Ms. Alfaro, um, there was a total monthly citations issued of a hundred and thirty-six. Monthly daily deposits for June, or the revenue collected for June was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, in terms of warrants, what was collected from warrants was a thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and six cents. Uh, just wanna point out that. Uh, just want to point out that the hearings have moved to Wednesdays. They used to be Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now they're on Wednesdays. It's pretty much a full day of court hearings throughout the day on, on Wednesdays now. Uh, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Henry. Uh, moving on to finance, uh, things are still ticking along with the auditors. Uh, you know, we've openly admitted and talked to people and, you know, let them know, you know, that two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen was a mess. Um, and you know, there's some key individuals in there that kind of have to make that happen. Uh, but overall, uh, everything's getting cleared up. They're working on eighteen, nineteen as well at the same time. And kind of looking at everything for uh nineteen, twenty. Um, and uh unfortunately, that's the way they kind of got to look at the whole thing just because of uh whatever, you know, uh, uh went down with some of the administration that year um in staff. But everything is going to get fixed on. We're working on it and we'll keep you guys posted once they get everything done. Um, other than that, uh, finances, I already talked to Everett and the uh girls. We're going back, you know, uh, at the, I feel that it's okay at this moment in time to start getting the employees back at their regular uh hourly requirements, at least for us that, you know, we need them because there's a lot of work that needs to get done. So we're kind of getting everybody back on uh, you know, trying to get them back up to the forty hours. Uh, because there's just, there's a lot of stuff that needs to get done. Um, other than that, I mean, that's it. Uh, moving on to adminis-, or Mr. Weeks, did you have anything to comment or anything uh that you would like to add or, or, or ask uh for finances?
No, I was just in the office today to pick up my checks and I saw David and I told him, you know, I'm going to be out of town. Um, starting this Thursday, I'll be back next Monday night. But maybe next week we can get together and review things. Uh, because we're, we're supposed to have our second quarter review for our, our next meeting. And then we're also uh need to start really gearing up for the budget, of course.
Yeah, and those are some of the things that we asked him to take a look at and to reach out to you about. Uh, so, you know, let me know, uh, because I've asked him to reach out to you a few times on certain questions and stuff, but uh glad you took the time.
He, he did ask a question, I did, he did call me with the question that I told him uh to go back to whoever the engineer was. There was a, a payment made on a grant last, or in twenty eighteen, nineteen for seventy-some thousand. I, you know, I told him, we as council have none, no knowledge of the inner workings of any of that and who even the subcontractors are, you know, how that works. So, so uh maybe he reached back out to you about that.
Alright, sounds good, Sean. Um, moving on to administration, like we talked about COVID numbers going up, uh, we're looking at uh possibly uh, we're getting a little bit on the request for rationing out uh specific and particular items here at town. Um, you know, we're trying to finalize everything up for the pavement project on Wildcat, getting the water going. Um, get finishing up the park light. Uh, we've installed some more speed bumps up in the Heights. Um, and we did have an incident with a vehicle and a pedestrian, but after talking to chief and looking at the report, uh, it was the individual that was on foot that was actually at fault. Um, we're also finalizing again the things done up and finished up with the well. So aside from that and what we're doing here administratively, I don't really have anything else to add that we've already discussed in council. Um, but I did want to point out for the record, since we do have it here on video, um, we have made numerous attempts to contact Mr. Guzman from the local union on that particular uh agenda item. Um, it wasn't until recently that we saw him uh post a comment on the actual video feed on the Facebook page about uh not receiving info or anything into the discussion. But um, you know, I openly stated in the meeting, if he joined in or called late, we'd give him the floor. Uh, we had tried contacting him several times. He wouldn't answer and we also tried emailing him and he didn't reply with his email. So I think at this point in time, it's a little bit too late. The item is done with and we're already on to the departmental reports. Uh, but I'll reach out to him uh afterwards or tomorrow just to kind of follow up and uh get some uh, offer him any clarification or uh, uh, I guess clarification on some of the items that he may have a misunderstanding about or something. Um, but I'll let you guys know. Other than that, uh, anything else under administration?
Ben, I think you should have Norma uh document the, the times that she tried to call him and how many times she tried to call him so that we could have, you can have all that too. Uh, because if you, if you go to Facebook, it'll show what time he tried to post into Facebook. And I think she was calling well before he was posting into Facebook.
Yeah, even before the item was done. And on top of that, we don't actively monitor the comments left on the page.
Right, of course.
And, and we've already stated any individuals that need to call or speak on an agenda item need to call. Uh, that way we can place them and send them the invite to be part of the meeting and, and on the agenda. Uh, but anything else from anybody? Henry, anybody? Chief, Everett?
Mayor, do you want to touch upon the uh issue that we had that um last Thursday with the distribution as far as the USDA funding for New Mexico?
Yes, sir. Um, so I did oppose, ladies and gentlemen, trying to update and every, get everybody, uh, inform everybody about um that USDA gov is no longer allowing us to provide food distribution for Anthony, New Mexico residents. Um, you know, some people took that wrong. Uh, unfortunately, it wasn't meant to be malicious. Um, we did everything we could. We always try and consider, you know, the residents out there in Anthony, New Mexico. Um, so whether or not, you know, their administration or individuals are there providing food distribution, we don't know that. People, I think, reach out to me and the town because we have a more active online presence um that maybe they do. Uh, but we totally, you know, support, you know, what they're trying to do for their community and if they're trying to do food distribution. Send us the list. I don't mind sharing it. Um, but I just wanted to clarify, you know, the USDA gov did get involved and they wanted to make sure that specifically the uh food uh donations that are being done on that Thursday are being done by uh, are being handed out to Texas residents. Um, and then also it's, it got the same with the Anthony Food Pantry. Uh, but we did receive a donation and are going to receive a donation of some, I think, eight pallets of food um that we will be able to put together in any families or anybody that are in need of uh food baskets or anything like that. Whether you're Anthony, Texas or New Mexico, um, we will try and do what we can with uh that food distribution to be able to help you guys out. So please feel free to message or contact the Anthony Police Department, provide their name and, and uh information. Chief will definitely reach back out to you, um, and they'll definitely see what we can do to help, okay? Thank you, guys. Uh, next regular council meeting is scheduled at six thirty PM on Monday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made by Mr. Chavez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't think anyone wants to leave home today. Thank you, Sean. Um, you all have a great night. Thank you, guys, for uh following along those that were on Facebook and stuff and watching the online meetings. Thank you, guys, for taking interest and following along. If there's anything you guys ever need, please feel free to reach out to me or an issue that you guys want to discuss. I'm all ears. Let me know. We'll place it on the agenda. Thank you very much and have a great night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Night, everybody.
Night.